Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmer's Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Laura Inghamman and this is your flash briefing for the week of September 23rd. City Council meets for regular session Tuesday nights, 6:00 in council chambers in City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Oktoberfest is this coming weekend, September 27th through 29th in downtown Lee Summit. This family-friendly festival has been a community favorite for over 30 years. Enjoy two stages of live entertainment, German meals and dancing, carnival, children's activities on Kid Street, craft booths, and more. We will see you there. The city has partnered with the Community Blood Center for a blood drive on October 7th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the city's meetings facility. All participating donors will be put into a drawing for two Kansas City Chiefs tickets and a parking pass. Find a link to register on the city's website. And join the stream team Make a Difference on October 12th. Help protect our local streams from moving litter and debris. Trash bags and gloves are provided and student and scout community service hours are available. Learn more at cityofls.net. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Hello, I'm Colin McCage and I'm here to show you how to test and adjust the water pressure in your home. Testing water pressure in a home can protect its plumbing. First, check the fixtures to see if they are leaking or if there is debris in the aerator or faucet. If no issues are found around the plumbing or fixtures, test the home's water pressure. Ensure there is no water use inside your home. Locate your front water spigot. Place a water pressure gauge on the spigot. An ideal water pressure for your home is 40 to 80 PSI. Contact Water Utilities about the water pressure issue before adjusting. To adjust your water pressure, locate your home's pressure reducing valve, or PRV. Loosen the lock nut on the PRV with a wrench. Loosen or tighten depending if you want more or less water pressure. Tighten the lock nut once you have your desired water pressure. Thank you for watching. For more information and questions, go to lswater.net. It's Mayor Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. Quite a few of us are getting questions. I know I've gotten a few questions about the plans, so I didn't know if, just for the public knowledge. I'm not a politician. I feel like I'm just an average person in Lee Summit. They have a football field set up inside these homes or their football fields. Our two-car garage is gonna, we're gonna bring the driveway back through here and it's gonna go right here. And then... So my family has chickens. When we first got chickens, my husband said, "Don't treat them as your pets. Treat them as chickens because we're going to end up, we're gonna be eating the eggs and I would like to use them for meat." So don't treat them as your pets. Well, we now have six chickens that I consider my pets and I will not let him kill for meat. So we live downtown and we love living downtown. These are my children. The first one's Lincoln and Amira and Sophia and Caleb. This is a great neighborhood. Downtown is one big community and all of the kids get together and they play basketball and we like to walk to the farmer's market. It's an easy walk, probably less than 10 minutes. The farmer's market has always been a very important part of my life and my family's life. As a matter of fact, when my daughter started kindergarten, I dropped her off and I was going shopping at the farmer's market right behind Lee Summit Elementary. And I was teary-eyed because she was my first and she was going off to kindergarten. And Terry, the butterfly lady, the one that's in the purple shirt and she used to make little butterfly stickers for everyone, she gave me a big hug and was just so empathetic to the fact that my daughter had just started school.
How are you guys doing?
Doing well. How are you?
Very good.
A lot of the farmers there, my kids have, they've watched my kids grow up. I love Lee Summit in general. I love that it still has a small-town feel while embracing growth and the arts and diversity. And I feel like downtown specifically embodies that. My kids go to Lee Summit Elementary and a lot of their teachers live downtown and a lot of the business owners from downtown live downtown. So when we're out walking downtown, we see so many people we know. I lived in Africa until I was five and then we moved to the United States and I've lived in Lee Summit since. Oh, a lot of my childhood, my mom was a single mom and I feel like I was essentially raised by my community and being on council and it's just such an important way to give back to the community that raised me.
I state your name.
I'm Mia Pryor.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I present the qualifications.
The date of April 2023.
The election process was fun. I got to go door-to-door and talk to people, which is my absolute favorite thing to do, is talking to people and learning about people. I even had people inviting me into their house for dinner or inviting me back to their house to meet their spouse. And I actually, I knocked on a door and the lady that answered the door was my kindergarten teacher. So it was a lot of fun. Is it on? Hi, everyone. I'm council member Mia Pryor. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
I have one on. Can you not? Okay. Maybe I'll watch.
I love being a council rep for District One. I know everyone says this, but District One is by far, in my opinion, the best district. Rain Tree Lake, that's part of District One. I love that community. Actually, my husband and I got married at the clubhouse in Rain Tree Lake. I really love all of South Lee Summit. I love the, the growth that they're going to be experiencing soon and that they've already experienced. I wanted to say that if you guys have a concern, please, please come tell us what your concern is because we can only, we can only address and help with what we know. We're there to kind of bridge that gap, bridge that gap between constituents in the city and we're the voice of our constituents and we can go to the city and voice what their concerns are, what their ideas are. So if you have a concern, definitely make us aware. So my big priorities are public safety. That's always one of my top priorities. I've always wanted to make sure that first responders were supported. I think that that's super important to me and to many in, in our city. But also, I, I wanted to influence the growth in Lee Summit. I wanted to influence the type of businesses we get here and the type of activities there are to do for our families. If we're gonna continue to grow downtown, how important it is to focus on people that already live here and the infrastructure we already have in place.
Our first presentation tonight is gonna be Assistant City Manager Ryan Elam, who's going to talk about that very exciting farmer's market plaza.
But I want to show you the most recent rendering, fly-through video of that. That's really the best way to kind of get a good sense of what this will look like in the near future.
To see it developing into something as big as it's going to be across from City Hall is super exciting to me. I can't wait for it to get built and to start welcoming people into what the farmer's market's gonna be, but also everything else that goes along with that development. You wanna hold it? Grab it. Perfect. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Bye. I'm just an average person in Lee Summit that wanted to be a voice of many that, that sometimes feel like they don't have a voice. Yeah, I'm not a politician. I'm just a mom that cares.
We will call to order the Lee Summit Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, September 26, 2024. Could I get a roll call, please?
Mark Kitchens. Cherry Frazier.
Present.
Jake Lovelace.
Present.
Dana Arth.
Present.
Donnie Funk.
Present.
Terry Trafton.
Present.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Present.
Chip Tuzinski.
Present.
Randy Benbrook.
Present.
Thank you. I know no changes to the agenda. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as published.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as published.
Motion of a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Could I get a vote on approval of the agenda, please?
Cherry Frazier.
Approved.
Jake Lovelace.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Donnie Funk.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Yes.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
Thank you and the agenda has been approved. We are at a position for our public comments. Anyone outside of the business of the application we have tonight, have anything? Thank you, Councilman Lovell, for joining us this evening. We will move on to our approval of the consent agenda. It has one item. Item A, approval of the September 12th, 2024 Planning Commission Action Letter. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion of a second?
Second.
Motion of a second. Could I get a vote, please?
Cherry Frazier.
Yes.
Jake Lovelace.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Donnie Funk.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Yes.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
Thank you and the consent agenda has been approved. We will move on to our public hearings and we have one public hearing and we will open up Continued Application PL 2024-107 Special Use Permit Renewal for Maintenance Equipment Storage Rain Tree Lake Maintenance Facility, 504 Southwest 163rd Street. RLPOA applicant. Anyone wishing to provide testimony or speak on behalf of this application, please stand and be sworn in at this time. Thank you. The applicant has a presentation for us. They want to come forward and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Cresswell. I am the Operations Manager for Rain Tree Lake Property Owners Association.
Sorry, could you spell your last name?
Yes, C-R-E-S-S-W-E-L-L.
Thank you.
Welcome. Address is 825 Southwest Rain Tree Drive, Lee Summit, Missouri 64082. And I'll refer back to Scott and his staff.
Good evening. Hector Soto Jr., Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 15.
1 through 15 noted and entered into the record.
Purpose of this application is to renew a special use permit that has previously been approved twice, first in 2003 and then subsequently in 2013 for the RLPOA maintenance facility here depicted in, in, well, I guess it'd be Crimson at the southernmost boundary of the city and the Rain Tree Lake subdivision. Here you can see that the prevailing nature of the surrounding property is zoned residential, residential to the east, north to the west, all zoned R1. Across the street to the south is outside of the city limits, but it's agricultural in nature and these two lots here are also outside of the city limits. So if you can imagine, that line runs along here, the city corporate boundary line, and then it jogs to the north, over to the west, to the south around these two lots, but everything else around it, Lee Summit. So the existing building, as we said, was previously approved in 2003. It is a 5,000 square foot building. It is their base of operation for maintenance facility. What you can see here is the site plan from back in 2003, so kind of reflective of what was approved then and what's still in existence is the, you can kind of tell a little bit here, there's a, there's a berm that provides some screening along the south and western edge of the facility. There's landscaping along the east side and south side around and along that berm. Back in 2013, there was an additional requirement to provide some more landscaping here at a point that's parallel to the overhead doors that are located on the west side of the building. All of that's been planted and continues to exist and is maintained well. Along the west, here you can see there's a six-foot vinyl fence that also provides some screening to the, from the property to the west. So there were two neighborhood meetings that were held. The first one had about 24 residents. There were just some general questions about what the special use permit renewal process is, if any changes are proposed to the facility, be it in landscaping or just the expansion of use, none of that being the case. So nothing is changing on the site. They're just looking to renew their permit. For those that are not familiar with the site, this is the, the existing facility, the view from, an angled view and a dead-on view from 163rd Street. So one of the things that was important at the time that the building was constructed in 2003 was in order to better blend in with the existing single-family nature of the residences along 163rd, they incorporated, as you can see here, kind of the faux chimney, some other kind of stone materials you use for columns, kind of the pitched porch roof, just a pitched roof on the, the building rather than just a flat, kind of typical industrial metal building. The materials that you see on the, the rest of the body includes some lap siding and some kind of more Ephesus-type material. The comprehensive plan shows this area as being a single-family or residential one in nature, which is characterized by single-family development. So there are just three conditions of approval. Two and three are carried over from previous applications or previously approved SUPs and the first one is just for the extension of 10-year period to expire on August 13th, 2033. So with that, I'll yield any questions?
Thank you, Hector. Have any questions or comments from the public on this application? Questions, Commissioner Benbrook?
No questions, thank you.
Tuzinski.
Mr. Chairman, just one quick question. On a property like this where it's already been in use for how many years?
It's been 20 at this point.
20 years and they've asked for another 10 years, so every 10 years we ask them to come back. Would this be the situation that maybe we could double it and say, hey, let's do a 20? I mean, unless, unless there's a reason that you feel this is gonna be nothing really else other than this, right? And, but I don't know, just for them having to come back, I'm just wondering if this could be a situation where we could make it longer and I would just look to the city to see what your thoughts are, if keeping it 20 is, or keeping it 10, sorry, is, is what you feel is the best or if you think going to a longer term?
To your point, it's been there 20 years. We've not had a single zoning or any kind of maintenance violation or complaint that's been filed on the property. So staff would be comfortable with going a longer than the 10-year period.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Janna Ford.
No questions, sir. Thank you.
Trafton.
No questions, Chair.
Commissioner Arth.
So I, I guess the, the second 10-year period expired was August 13th, 2023? Or, okay, okay. That's, that's all I had.
Commissioner Lovelace. Commissioner Frazier.
I would agree with extending it to 20 years if possible, assuming there are no changes or addition.
Thank you. And Hector, kind of look to you guys. I mean, is it our purview to make the decision? Particular instance, Nate and myself, I think I've been through all of these changes. It's not gonna be anything else. Is that something that we have to go back and revisit or can we make that decision tonight?
Of making an amendment to condition number one, to make it, let's say, 20? Is, no, I mean, it's perfectly within your purview to make that amendment if you decide to make that recommendation.
I think is the question for the applicant, is this something that you would feel comfortable with us making the decision to extend this to a 20-year? There's gonna be no changes? You don't have any future plans for it?
Absolutely. There are no future changes at this moment.
Thank you.
Hector, what is the purpose for the special use permit in this case?
Well, in this case, part of it is to help provide a mechanism by which things like outdoor storage of vehicles, the noise associated with the running of equipment, because we realize that although with the, not all subdivisions have maintenance facilities, but this one, again, it's in close proximity to single-family and residential. So there is always the potential that this storage of materials and equipment could negatively impact surrounding properties. But to this point in the past 20 years, we've not seen evidence of, of it. They've been good neighbors to their own residents who they would ultimately have to answer to and I'm sure at their monthly meetings, if, if there becomes an issue, they will, they will be the first ones to probably be on top of it, so.
Yeah, because I would think that it would be self-policing just by virtue of it being part of an HOA. So, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions while we're in public hearing? I will close the public hearing and we will look for a motion. I think we have a discussion point. Do we need to make our original motion and then amend that a motion to move to a 20-year
That's correct. There needs to be a motion on the floor first. So the motion on the floor would be to approve the application and then on that, when there's discussion on that, then a motion can be made at that point to amend it from the 10 years to the 20 years, as you guys have started discussing.
Okay. So I'll look for a motion from Mr. Chair.
Do you want to have discussion first before we make a motion?
Are we all in agreement? I guess we could have discussion if we want to amend to the 20-year.
Yeah.
Is everybody in agreement to that?
I mean, my two senses is generally speaking, I think it's better that it comes back to us more frequently, just in the instance that something goofy happens, but I think this is one of those very specific instances where these guys will generally self-police. And as Hector mentioned, they've literally had no complaints over the 20-year, 21-year period that this has been in existence. So I think this is the exception of the rule and I think it's a good recommendation.
So Mr. Tuzinski, he's gonna make a motion. Do you want to amend the motion? After his motion, do you want to amend it to add, amend condition number one to 20 years versus 10 years?
Yes, sir.
Chair, I move to recommend approval of Continued Application PL 2024-107 Special Use Permit Renewal of the Maintenance Equipment Storage at Rain Tree Lake Maintenance Facility, 504 Southwest 163rd Street. RLPOA applicant.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a change in the recommendation on, what is it, the condition number one, to have that read, the special use permit shall be granted for a period of 20 years from the date of the previous special use permit expiration to expire on...
expire on August 13, 2043.
I have a motion to amend the...
A second.
Have a motion to amend, and a second. Could I get a vote, please?
Cherry Frazier.
Yes.
Jake Lovelace.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Donnie Funk.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Yes.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
The application has been recommended for approval.
Chair.
Yes.
That, uh, what you just approved was the...
Amendment.
amended motion. So now you need to approve the application as a whole.
Okay.
With the amended motion.
It's already on the table.
And it's been seconded. So we should be able to...
We can go ahead and vote for the original motion.
Yep.
Sorry, I messed that all up for you.
Cherry Frazier.
Yes.
Jake Lovelace.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Donnie Funk.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Yes.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
Now, it has been recommended for approval. We will move on to our next item of business, and that is roundtable. Any roundtable from the commission? And staff?
I only have one item on roundtable. Just a quick reminder, December 12, we're slated for Planning Commission training, so just keep that on your, your back burner there, um, on your calendars, so...
Else, anybody?
Oktoberfest starts tonight, tomorrow.
Yeah, Oktoberfest.